In keeping with the board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on the CCPS website at www.carrollk12.org and broadcast live on channel 21. We're also recording this meeting so that it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on channel 21. Citizen participation is scheduled on the agenda for approximately 5:15 and 6:30. Speakers will be directed into the boardroom from the building lobby. Speakers are allotted three minutes to address the board. As a reminder, please silence all cell phones or other devices. Also, board members, please turn off your microphones when you are not speaking. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I?
Moved by Ms. Pataglia. Second by Dr. Dorsey. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of the minutes from the budget work session on February 2nd. Motion to accept, approve the amendments.
So move.
Moved by Dr. Dorsey.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Pataglia. Any comments, changes, corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
The minutes from the board meeting on February 9, which we've received some edits and changes prior to this, motion to approve.
So move.
Moved by Ms. Pataglia, second.
I'll second.
Second by Dr. Dorsey. Any more revisions, discussion, changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
We hope that we'll be able to meet with some of our senators. Lastly, we spent the meeting discussing tentative plans for the future, such as our officer elections and the Board of Education forum next fall. Our next meeting is scheduled for April 12th, and we are excited to announce the next Rob elect by the next meeting. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Now for public comments, Ms. Pataglia.
To have an orderly presentation of comments by the public, the following guidelines apply. Speakers will be allowed to address the board for the allotted three minutes. Citizens not appearing in person for public comment can write to the board through email or US mail. Citizen participation is not intended to be a question and answer session. However, if citizens have specific questions, the superintendent will assign a staff member to make contact during the board meeting to arrange a time to respond to questions. The superintendent and board reserves the right to correct misinformation presented as factual after the conclusion of the citizen participation period. Statements to the board should relate to a recent agenda item, an agenda item that is expected to appear in the future, or a matter of general policy over which the board has authority. Personal matters, pending appeals, the actions or statements of individual staff, or items related to an employee negotiations are not appropriate topics and may not be discussed. It is the intent of the board to allow all citizens an opportunity to speak. Therefore, the board has scheduled time on the agenda for citizens' participation at approximately 5:15 and 6:30. The board reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on a particular topic so that all topics may be addressed. If 30 minutes has passed and there are citizens who have not addressed the board, additional time may be allotted later in the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. All comments should be directed to the board members at the dais. When the allotted time expires, the speaker is permitted to complete a sentence. Citizens may leave any handouts for board members on the table at the back of the boardroom. Please do not approach the dais. Additionally, the public may not display signs or posters during the board meeting. In lieu of signs, or if you are unable to complete your comments in the allotted time, individuals are encouraged to submit remarks to the board in writing. Those seated in the audience are asked to be respectful of the speaker and refrain from commenting to the speaker or to the board members. And the first speaker is Joy Fish. And if I mispronounce your name, can you please correct me?
It's Fisher.
Thank you.
They told me to just keep quiet, for there was no need to start a riot. Hide the anger, hide the fear, don't even show a glistening tear. What they didn't say was that I'd grow up, that one day it would all erupt. I would stand alone to defend my throne, a speechless queen, please let this be a dream. I'm forced to stand tall, but only stumble and fall. I want to be heard like the song of a bird. Instead, I muddle, then hastily make rebuttals. I cannot speak, I am too meek. I was sheltered and hid by my own walls of silence. You force me into a light that my eyes could not bear. I'm frightened and scared, it just doesn't seem fair. They didn't tell me silence could kill, they didn't explain the words of a will. They only told me to refrain, they didn't tell me this could maim. They didn't tell me, they didn't explain, they just told me to keep quiet, for there was no need to start a riot. Carroll County School Board, you are the "they." Our children and our parents have been silent too long. Our children deserve to be heard, our children deserve to be respected, understood, and valued for who they authentically are. Your continued refusal to acknowledge this for our LGBTQ+ students is detrimental. Suicide is the second leading cause of death among people, Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, 2020, with the LGBTQ youth being four times more likely to seriously consider suicide, to make a plan for suicide, and to attempt suicide than their peers. The Trevor Project's 2021 National Survey of LGBTQ Youth Mental Health found that 19% of LGBTQ youth ages 13 through 18 and 8.3% of LGBTQ youth ages 19 to 24 reported attempting suicide in the past year. I will not bore you with the math, but this equates to at least one LGBTQ youth between the ages of 13 and 24 attempting suicide in the US every 45 seconds. You, CPS School Board, need to own these statistics. Every time you refuse to allow teachers to ask pronouns, have safe space, create clubs in all grades, refuse to acknowledge or provide health and sex education that reflects the LGBTQ+ community, you are removing one more layer of self-worth in our LGBTQ+ students and bringing them one step closer to that 45-second mark. This is not about offending people, this is about life and death. You must begin to comprehend this, or accept that your actions, or lack thereof, action is killing our youth. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jo Seska.
If being LGBT isn't a choice, why is it being taught in our schools as if it is? I'll say it again, if it isn't a choice, why is it being taught as if it is? This gender ideology is false. Over 99.5% of people identify with their biological gender. Say, a less than half percent of the population somehow proves that gender is a spectrum is ridiculous. Mankind is old, and we long ago figured out that men are different than women. We have different characteristics, and these are inherent to our gender. Crackpot theory does not prove long-established patterns of human behavior. This ideology is dangerous. What happens when your daughter, who may be a tomboy, hears this ideology and decides she is a man? She then proceeds to surgically modify her body and take hormones, only discover later that she really isn't a man. What happens when your son, who may like to cook, may like bright colors or have long hair, decides he's a woman and proceeds to lot parts of his body off and later learns he isn't a woman? These are the types of stories we are hearing with this dangerous ideology, and the damage is irreversible. What other effects will this have? Imagine your child in a throes of purity with this harmful ideology now mixed in. Imagine the confusion they may feel in the isolation, knowing that they don't understand who they are. These kids will be unhinged. The depression and anxiety they may feel from being so confused about themselves will be intense. What happens when your child pulls away from you when you can't help them? What will you do as a parent? What types of bad habits will they develop? Alcoholism, drug use? Their lives will be stunted at best, permanently ruined at worst. They will be demoralized. People who identify as transgender are an outlier. They don't fit the conventional mold, and they are few in number. No same person would conclude from this that they prove that gender is a spectrum. There's a large amount of overlap in the characteristics of men and women. This does not mean one equals the other, or can be modified into the other. Humans are not fungible. Evolution dictated that we have a male and female, and that we'd be different for the purposes of survival. We go against that to our own detriment. Is it any wonder we have anti-LGBT backlash when this gender ideology is being forced upon our youth? The phrase "do unto others what has been done to me" rings loudly here. If you want respect, then stop forcing your lifestyle on innocent children, and we will do the same. Thank you.
I'm Lindsey Fabiano, and this is my son Walter. We're here together in an attempt to reset the mindset in this important forum, because it's vital to the future generations that it remains unpoliticized, neutral, and above all kind. In terms of the opinions shared in this room, there seems to be two sets of values that are construed as having to be at odds with each other, all with similar intent. Some prioritize topics like more support for teachers, bullying in schools, and a plan to address learning loss. Another prioritizes topics like masks, appropriate school literature, and freedom of parental choice. For the benefit of our children, we should be able to find a middle ground on these issues. Contrary to popular belief, there's far more that we agree on than we do not. When the focus shifts from our children to our agendas or our dislikes of one another's views, we have adequately failed our kids. We agree more effective anti-bullying policies are necessary. Let's all aim to improve this together. The best way to do is to show. This is a very sensitive topic for so many, and should be nurtured and understood. I've seen that happen many times, and it warmed my heart to see us come together, together for compassion and empathy for one another. Don't be a bully here, online, or anywhere for that matter. Lead with kindness, lead with an open heart, but first and foremost, lead by example. We all agree that making a plan to address learning loss is important. This has been a really tough two years for our students and our staff. Our children's learning, socialization, mental and physical health has been affected on many levels. Our teachers have shared that burden, at times under intense scrutiny and mental anguish. All parents and members of this board have the power to listen, interpret, make changes in our schools for the well-being of all, not just some. Let's make that plan together. Many who speak here claim to promote inclusion, equality, and integrity. I truly believe that promotion is heartfelt, and must now be backed up with actions. Include the opposition, have hard conversations, see each other as equal, fighting for the same thing on different ends of the spectrum, find middle ground. Have integrity, show it by telling, by being whole and undivided, with strong moral principles. Walter wanted to share a quote that we mantra often when we make mistakes. Lord knows, we all make them, and if we're humble and kind, we may just learn from them to work together for our children.
Be the change you wish to see in the world. This begins with you and carries on for generations in your children. Do the best you can until you know better, then when you know better, do better. We encourage and plead with you all to work together for each other, our school board, our community, our state, our country, but most importantly, for us children. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Next speaker is Wendy Novak.
I did not always agree with my mother. She loved Vols football and every other SEC football team except for when they were playing the Vols. I never understood that. I'm not a football fan, but I respected it. She used to not understand my support for the LGBTQ community. Someone introduced my mom to The Ellen Show, and she liked her, and my mom's world opened a little. I'm adopted, my biological sibling came out as non-binary. My mom followed their story with interest, wanted to make sure she understood everything because they were someone I love. She needed to know people in the LGBTQ community so she could be comfortable with people different from her. Our kids also need this opportunity to get to know people different from them. This doesn't indoctrinate our children, and it won't turn them gay or trans. Babysitting for homosexuals didn't turn my daughter, nor did knowing trans individuals. Learning about gender identity and sexual orientation does not change anyone. It's also not contagious. Our children need help, and our teachers are struggling. Our students are behind academically, yet there has been no agenda item to deal with learning loss. Our students are not alone with this, it's happening all over. I don't expect that you know how to solve it, but you should be calling for people to work on this problem. Our LGBTQ students are also suffering. They need it to be easier to be their authentic selves. Teachers should have the opportunity to ask students their preferred pronouns. Suicide is the second leading cause of death among young people, with LGBTQ youth being four times more likely to seriously consider suicide, to make a plan for suicide, and to attempt suicide versus their peers. You have the power to help these students. Giving them an option to be safe expressing their gender identity could save their life. I know there are people in the community and on this board that are not comfortable with pronouns. Is your discomfort more important than a child's safety? When you make a rule, because people are uncomfortable, you're showing the LGBTQ community must keep that part to themselves, that other people's discomfort is more important than they are. I see a lot of information, misinformation in this community and coming from this board. I've heard members state that not everyone has pronouns. That's clearly not true. I have heard a member say they support LGBTQ lifestyle choices. Sexual orientation and gender identity are not a choice. Using the word "choice" allows the possibility that a person could change. It trivializes their identity. Lifestyle implies all live the same way. Another member told the story of being asked by a middle school student what pronoun they use. The member told the student there was only one of them. The lack of understanding shown by this member is inappropriate. If we worried about people's comfort level with new ideas, we would still be living like it was in the 60s, when people were uncomfortable with mixed marriages and desegregation. Support all your children and staff, not just the ones that look and feel like you do. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
I'd like to make a quick correction. I was the one that said about the sixth grader, who was very embarrassed because she was asked what her pronoun was. Yes, she was athletic, yes, she was a gymnast, but it hurt her feelings. I know we don't care about hurting her feelings, and she's, just let me finish there, shake your head. She did say, "It can't be 'they' because there's not two of me." I consider that a very intelligent remark, and I'm sorry if you don't like it, and some people want to be "they." Her feelings were hurt very badly, and we got to care about her, too.
And I want to address also, you know, supposedly, you know, we haven't discussed learning loss or anything. It has been brought up every board meeting. We go through when we do the COVID financials, and it has in there regarding the learning loss, how much money has been spent on, when we have the after-school programs for the students, the identification of students to get caught up. Dr. Lockard, do you want to say anything else regarding that, or Ms. Herbert?
We've already had a robust summer recovery program last year, and we are continuing this year with another recovery. And we have had recovery programs for the last two years after school, so we have spent a lot of money on not learning loss. Dr. Lockard.
Thank you. Right. You know, our student achievement is of utmost importance to us. We focus on that each and every day. That's also a part of our strategic plan. It's the first big pillar as it relates to the pathways, and so we have multiple opportunities as we review the pillars of our strategic plan to address issues related to student achievement, to learning loss, to the opportunities for student. I have a few more comments, I'll save till the end. Thank you.
Next speaker is Wyatt Sullivan. Okay, you can leave them on the back, when you're finished, yeah.
Hello, board members. Last month, I was here with my sister, and while I was here, I heard some speaking on the fact that critical race theory is not being taught in Carroll County schools, and the board is wasting their time chasing this nonexistent manufactured problem. I'm here to tell you that some teachers are trying to sneak CRT into their lesson plans. I know this because it happened to me. I have copies for the board of a privileged questionnaire my teacher handed out in class, and also on the bottom of the page, the link to a video she played to our class talking about privilege. These things made me feel like I should be ashamed for being straight white male. I came home feeling very confused about why my teacher would try to point out and separate kids based on color, sex, gender, and who they like. Did you know when I was younger, we rented our house, we were on state insurance, and sometimes my grandmother had to buy us food so we could eat? I didn't know either. Did you know my dad painted during the day, was a salesman at night, and plowed snow in the winter? I didn't either. I just knew that my dad was working a lot, and I barely saw him. Do you know why my dad worked these three jobs when I was younger? So my parents could save money, be able to buy our house in Carroll County, and afford a health insurance. None of this sounds like privilege. It sounds like my dad worked really, really hard to give us a better life. Most kids don't know why they live in a place they live. Most kids don't know if their parents pay for their insurance. Have state insurance, or have none at all. And none of us pick the color of our skin or our gender. We are fearfully and wonderfully made by God. Do I believe there is racism today? Absolutely. And if someone is discriminated against, it should not be tolerated. But the majority of students do not see people for their color of their skin, and I believe this assignment segregated people into different groups, and that is wrong. When a bullet point says white race, ethnicity, and culture privilege, that is critical race theory. We are all one race, and that is the human race. My parents have taught me to love God and love others. I want to thank the people last month that lied about critical race theory, not being in school, and giving me the courage to speak out. I also want to thank the board for having teachers that teach about school and keeping us kids out of these politics. Thank you.
Next speaker is Margaret Barnes.
First, I'd like to say that we need to be intellectually honest about suicide in school. The lockdowns that we suffered for two years did more damage to our children and caused a rise in suicide that we have never seen before. So if you want to talk about suicide, you have to be honest and admit that the lockdowns contributed greatly to the suffering and emotional suffering of our children. That's number one. And never again. That will never happen again to my child. So, in my store, I had a teacher come in, and we had a great conversation, and then I asked her, I said, "Well, what is the purpose of education? What is the fundamental purpose of education?" Her answer was, "To introduce our kids to new ideas." That was her definition or the purpose of education, to introduce our children to new ideas. And I said, "Well, what kind of ideas are you talking about?" And she said, "Well, you know, there's a lot of parents who don't believe that the Holocaust ever happened," which I found shocking. And so we talked about that, and I said, "So, okay, so it's not about reading, it's not about teaching children reading skills, or math skills, or science, or practical skills, it's about introducing new ideas." Because in her mind, she felt that she was saving children from parents. And I think that that is a mentality that has grown in the past few years, where teachers literally think that they are saving children from parents, which is ridiculous. Also, I'd like to say that, you know, children in this new age of social media and computers, it's all about the body. It's all about body, and sex, and what do you look like, and Instagram, and all of that. And, you know, you talk about suicide, and you talk about how miserable kids are, and all I can think of is, we've created this monster. I don't think computers and social media and being digitized, in a world that's digitized, is serving our kids. I'd also like to say that diversity and inclusion includes kids who, you know, don't wear masks or are unvaxxed, but I have seen a lot of discrimination by people who say that they're for diversity, equity, inclusion, and then just talk smack about people because they have different views. But diversity isn't just about the body, diversity is about different points of view.
Please finish your thought.
I'd also like to say that we have to be very careful about where we're getting our information, what is being taught. I'm very interested to know what is in the lesson plans that are being taught to our children, because I know there's a lot of corporate influence coming down the pike through the blueprint and through the US Department of Education, where it's not educating our kids, it's indoctrinating our kids.
Lizette Matthews? I got it? Okay.
Hi, good evening, board members. This is my first time ever talking, so please bear with me. So I tell my children, I'm their biggest cheerleader, and I'm here to cheer on all LGBTQ+ students that need one in their life. Simple, that's it. I always say hi to every student getting lunch, and appreciate the times where I've had some come up to me and tell me their name rather than their dead name. I'm glad they feel comfortable to be able to share that with me, and my hope is that they receive that support everywhere. Again, simple, that's it. If we're not allowed to discuss pronouns, then what does that mean for the children who don't go by their assigned pronouns at birth and get misgendered every day? I've seen firsthand what being misgendered can do. Having all students share their pronouns will lessen the rate of bullying towards the community, which should be the focus for our students, for anyone, everywhere. I just want safe space. I just want safe space for everybody. That's it. Thank you very much.
I think there's been a big misunderstanding regarding the pronouns. It is not approved in CCPS documentation to have the pronouns. So when, so when other teachers or others are asking for that, it's something that's not approved in any of that documentation. So I think that's where the misunderstanding is.
Let me, if I could, also add, we will absolutely honor and support any pronoun that a student wants to be referred by. That's their right to do so. Our teachers, we expect them to absolutely respect that. Let me go on to say, it's also an ongoing expectation that we have of our staff, that we love, respect, honor, and appreciate all of our students, all of them, no matter their race, their socioeconomic status, their ethnicity, their sexual orientation, their gender identity, or their disability. And we'll continue to expect supports, empathy, safe spaces, resources, and trusted adults. It's my expectation as superintendent that we provide nothing less to our students and families. I appreciate you clarifying that, Ms. Pataglia. And that's what I wanted to make sure I was able to share.
Next speaker is Brian Thompson.
Good evening, board. I'm Brian Thompson. I'm chair of the Concerned Parents of Carroll County. First, I want to give my sincere thanks to the members of this board, who from the very beginning fought to keep our schools open and for the most recent efforts by our legal counsel to unmask our kids. We know very well that our state bureaucrats in the teachers' union didn't pivot their COVID strategy because of the changing science. They pivoted because of the changing politics and the chain reaction that was created by the bold action this board took to push back against the state. So again, we can't thank you enough for your leadership on that. I wish I had taken video of my kids' reactions when I told them no longer, that they no longer had to wear masks. At first, they couldn't believe it. They were ecstatic. And my, my six-year-old, who's a skeptic like his father, you know, he asked, you know, daddy, I'm scared that they will make us wear masks again. Will they? And I didn't have the heart to tell him the truth because really, I don't know. And so instead, what I said is, there's me and a bunch of other parents who are doing everything they can to make sure that this doesn't ever happen again. And so that is the ask I bring forward to you today. Never again do we let unelected state bureaucrats play politics with our children. I realize we've got a lot, we've asked a lot from you in our school system over the last two years. And like you, we want more than anything for COVID to go away. But the fact and the risk is real that state bureaucrats wielding policies against our children and harm them is real. The risk was made abundantly clear during the State Board of Education meeting last month when deciding on the mask mandate. Most of you, most of you understand when I say that the science hasn't changed one bit over the last two years. We always knew that lockdowns, masking our kids, quarantines, contact tracing, they just weren't effective. But putting that all aside, I really wanted to give the state the benefit of the doubt. Maybe with the knowledge that they have now, that they'd come to their senses and realize that perhaps we could have done things differently. But amazingly, you have the state superintendent Childery and board president Clarence Crawford, both maintaining that if given the chance to mask my kids for two more years, that they would do it all over again. Why? Because they would rather make our children suffer again for two more years than admit that they were wrong politically. It was abundantly clear from the State Board meeting that they do not serve the interests of our children and that this overreach of power can and will happen again. So again, we plead for this board to do everything in its power procedurally and legally to protect my children from this abuse of power ever happening again. And in the meantime, the Concerned Parents Group is going to do everything in our power to ensure the right Board of Education members are elected. We will reelect leaders who fought from the very beginning to return our schools to normal and protect our community from state overreach. And we will ensure that the self-proclaimed agent of the state who continuously voted to keep our schools closed is replaced by parent candidates who will put the interest of our children and hardworking teachers first, ahead of the teachers' union. Thank you.
Last speaker is James Miller.
Thank you for the opportunity. I actually came in mine with things I want to talk about. But first, I actually want to say thank you to the board. Thank you to Dr. Lockard. I know we're transitioning to a new superintendent. I want to thank you for your time you served. These last two years have been difficult, and I think you did a phenomenal job getting us through it. So thank you for that. But, you know, I wanted to address real quick the, the community and everything we're hearing. I guess you can quote unquote say from both sides. You know, I, two years ago, I really started getting interested, more interested in the board, what goes on in CCPS and what goes on at the state level. But what I really got my eyes open to was the division that has been created within this community. A lot of people who grew up here, a lot of people that moved here, moved here to Carroll County because of the schools in Carroll County. We have the best teachers. We have the best staff, 100%. And they need our support. And what I hear is the community and some in this community, some in this room who couldn't even clap for a young man, who poured his heart out, poured his heart out, but it wasn't the right side, so they couldn't clap. To a kid who poured his heart out up here, that's just not community. That's not who we are in Carroll County. I'm a parent of three kids in elementary school. And I want to bring community back to education. I want to bring confidence back to our schools. Confidence back in our teachers that I know are the best, absolutely, 100% the best. That's why I moved back here. I grew up here. That's why I moved back here. I just ask one simple thing, that the community come back together to do what's best for our children? We might not see eye to eye on everything. I 100% believe that. But I believe that we can have a heart and we can at least see when, when somebody is telling their side and has that emotion. For heaven's sake, don't shake your head. Don't, don't snicker. That was true heart and emotion right there. We have the best community in the state. We have the best school systems in this state. It's time to bring confidence back into our education system. It's time to trust our teachers and get our kids moving forward. Let's talk about learning loss. Let's talk about how we move forward, but let's come together as a community. Thank you.
Employee groups.
Good evening, Superintendent Lockard, members of the Board of Education and Commissioner Weaver. I am Teresa Basler McCullough, President of the Carroll County Education Association, who represents the teachers, counselors, RNs, speech language pathologists, behavior specialists, OTs, PTs, who don't just teach, but inspire. Thank goodness, excuse me, we are entering the homestretch. In the second semester, 100th day of school has been celebrated. Days are longer, except for today. Spring is trying to make an appearance. The state is opening, which all makes us feel better. All these factors put us in a better position for why we are here. Said it before, I'll say it again, to focus on education. Many educators feel that they are expected to hold status quo. But the landscape has changed in particular for the special education educators. This group has been asked to do an increasing amount of work in the last two years. As if their job responsibilities are not enough, their plates are heaping. I've spoken about educators workload before, but today I'm going to provide a visual. That's what teachers do. So first of all, is there caseload? Then you have the IEPs. And then there's the paperwork that comes with all of that. It's getting a little heavy, watch out. Then there's planning with colleagues. And in some cases, special educators cover more than one grade level. So then there's more than one planning through the day to meet with other colleagues. Then there's those progress reports. Okay. COVID paperwork. Don't do that. I don't want you to get messed up and I don't want you to get burnt. Okay. Oh, and then there's testing that comes with their job. Compensatory services. Just, just, okay, you got me, just in case? Because it's getting heavy. My plate runneth over. Then it's the medical assistant needs. Oh, wait a minute. There is teaching involved. Oh, 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 don't go, don't get messed up. Okay, okay, like I said, it's, my plate runneth over. And then we have we season it with a staff shortage. Now, do you mind, here, it's, it's, okay, you got it? Okay. In addition, if there's a special educator who decides to have a baby, and you know, we teachers do have babies, or an educator is out on medical leave, the team needs to carry that person's load since the certificated substitute pool is dry, which is a segue into looking into the near future. This report began in a celebratory manner. It may be too soon to start the party since there are crucial situations facing us. Staffing shortages are real. And we're going to be competing with every county in the state and other states in the nation. The pipeline is drying. Understanding, compassion, communication, and flexibility goes a long way. If our educators, elected officials, and the community truly work together, we will make Carroll County once again the most appealing county to live, work, play, and teach. Thank you. Okay, got it?
All right, I gotta ask, Teresa, what kindergarten classroom did you grab them from? Thank you.
Then COVID update. Dr. Lockard?
Thank you. I believe is, yep, there she is. Come on up and if we can get the slide deck uploaded, that'd be great.
If anyone wants to leave, please do so quietly before we transition into our agenda.
Did I do that right? I'm on. So tonight, it's a little bit different slide deck. Going to give a little bit of the history of how we used to look at transmissions in the community, what the CDC changed to and why they changed. I kind of figured we'd lay the groundwork. A lot of the other things that are changing are our data is coming at a different rate now because we're in a good spot. So we're not getting death lists every day. We're not getting hospital admission list every day. We're getting those once a week now. So you'll see some of the data is on different timeframes right now till we get caught up. First slide. So to date, as of the fifth, there were 21,094 confirmed cases that have happened in Carroll County. Our positivity rate is 4.3%. And as of 3/7, it was rising over the last few days, but not by many. We've had 383 deaths. Just note that the data does not include any home tests that were done. They're not all being reported. About 40% are being reported. Next slide. So, oh, that looks different than it did on my slide, but that's okay. So the last date that we had a full week of data from was 2/27. And these are the confirmed cases by week. And you can see that since our peak at 600, 1,622, which was about two months ago, we're down around 87 right now. Next slide. Our hospitalization for COVID is at 11 for the week that ended. And I believe the date's missing. I think it's supposed to be 2/27 on there. That's the last full week of data we have. Next slide. COVID deaths, we've kind of stayed at one for the last, I think these are done in two-week blocks. So for the last two weeks, we had one and then one. The data has been adjusted, just like I usually mentioned. That previously, I think the 18 was a 17, but one of those deaths was determined to have been a Carroll County resident. So it's then put in the right week. They do lag the hospitalizations, so the data's never complete on those. Next slide. So right now, to date, our total population in Carroll County, 73.3% are vaccinated. Most important number on here is the population that's eligible for vaccination, which is the greater than five. We're at 77.6%, which is a great number to be at. The state wanted us, I mean, herd immunity happened at 70%. The state was pushing for 80%. The state has a new program. It's the 50 and 50. So it's the 50 least vaccinated zip codes in the state of Maryland for 50 days. They will be doing testing. They will be going door to door to encourage people to get vaccinated. We are very blessed. We don't have any zip codes in the 50, in the top 50. So I was really happy when I looked at that data. Percentage vaccinated with a booster, this is the group that we're really working on. It's not just the first two vaccines. It's the booster that pushes you into a different level. And that's what we're encouraging people to get. You want to look at the next set, next slide? I didn't put that slide in, sorry. I thought I had it in there. So the new CDC guidance shifts the focus from eliminating COVID to reducing the severity of the illness and the strain on the healthcare system. So immunity, the reasons why we're doing and making these changes are that the immunity level in the U.S. population for now is relatively high. It's due to vaccinations, boosters, and infection-induced protection. I do have to state that not everybody who gets COVID, about 30% of people who get COVID, do not get any antibodies from it. I have a nice little slide deck and a little 16-minute video from a infectious disease doc, if anybody's interested in it. But about 30% of people do not get any antibodies. So that's why we tell people it's not a given that just because you had it, that you get immunity. So vaccines and testing are in good supply right now. Treatment is available and increasing. We have many more antivirals coming out. The availability are sent to each clinician in this community so that they know if they have an individual that's in their practice that needs to get treated. They know what pharmacy to call in Carroll County. And if they can't find that, they can call us. We will help guide them to that. It's still critical to protect the vulnerable populations and monitor cases and variants. Our healthcare settings, such as hospitals and nursing homes, should continue to use the previous guidance. So you'll notice that not all of those facilities will be easing restrictions like the rest of the community did because they're still under the old transmission rates. And they need to follow those for now. And then they also follow the CDC's infection and prevention control recommendations for healthcare workers. So there are some slight differences from the general population. Next slide. So the new CDC metrics, so the old metrics were on community transmission rates, were positivity and the transmission rates, and they focused on cases. The new thing that we're measuring are community levels. And community levels include the number of cases, as well as two hospital metrics, which are the new hospital. which are the new hospital admissions with confirmed COVID-19 per 100,000 people, and the percentage of inpatient beds that are being utilized at any hospital for COVID-19 patients. Available, this data's available at all county, at the county level for all counties, and it's updated at least weekly. It's designed to show more severe illness and the strain on the healthcare systems. It's, they went back and tested this on historical data. So they were able to go back a year and a half in COVID and look at the metrics. And they could see that, looking at these two metrics from the hospital and the number of cases in your community, we're able, that's why they shifted to this. Local conditions should also inform communities' actions. So our community vaccination coverage, our local surveillance of wastewater data, and the emergency department visits for COVID-19 should also help to inform changes we may need to make in the community or ask people to make. Next slide. So this is what the new chart looks like. So you'll see in that first section, it says per 100,000 people in the past seven days. So if you have fewer than 200, you can move to the indicators. And if you have over 200, you have no ability to go into the low transmission rate. So they're looking at the new COVID admissions per 100,000 people in a seven-day total. And then they're looking at the percent of staffed inpatient beds that are occupied by COVID-19 patients. And I can tell you at the height, when we were at that 1,632 number, I believe that 94% of the hospital beds in Carroll County were, and I think you had that, that presentation with me, were occupied with COVID-19 patients. And then you can see we're low, medium, high right now. Next slide, I believe we put it in here, is that we are at low community levels. The CDC recommends that individuals stay up to date with their COVID vaccinations and boosters, that we use improved ventilation in indoor spaces. We follow the CDC quarantine guidance if you're exposed to COVID-19 or isolation guidance if you have symptoms. If you test positive, you're supposed to follow isolation guidance, inform your close contacts, contact your healthcare provider about treatments that might be available for you. And then guidance may depend on your vaccination status, infection within the last 90 days, and includes testing, staying at home, masking, avoiding people who are at high risk and postponing travel. And at the medium levels, you need to take extra precautions around people who might be at higher risk of serious disease. Or if you yourself are at higher risk, you need to talk to your healthcare provider about prevention and treatment. Next slide. Extra precautions to take if you're at higher risk for illnesses. So adults, we know that older adults, 80% of the COVID-19 deaths occurred in people that were over the age of 65. People with chronic health conditions, including heart disease, cancer, diabetes, obesity, COPD, some mental health conditions, that the risk of severe illness increases with the number of underlying conditions that you have. Pregnant women need to be especially careful. People who live in congregate care settings, people with limited access to care. And I think if you're putting the slides up, that's the CDC's website that leads you to all this information. Next slide. So at low community levels, the CDC recommends that communities ensure equitable access to vaccines and testing. And we've been, part of equity is not just looking at, it's actually looking at where we've been able to get vaccine and where people have a slower uptake of vaccine. And interestingly enough, for Carroll County, those are the two largest zip codes. They're 21157 and 21784 because that's where the majority of the people live. So the majority of our unvaccinated people live in those two zip codes. So we don't have really any pockets where we missed. We ensure access to treatment and support for people at higher risk. Businesses and organizations can still take steps to protect at-risk workers and consumers by encouraging vaccination, requiring or recommending masking, depending upon the situation, improving ventilation, offering virtual meetings and work options, and providing sick leave for employees. You know, it's still recommended, and we had this confirmed on the last three calls over two days, that distancing is still recommended three-foot at this time from the CDC. So, next slide. Health departments, whoops, planning and preparedness. We're continuing to monitor cases, hospitalizations, and deaths. We will likely have a lower levels of COVID probably in the next few months and probably through the summer. If we can make it through the next three months, probably the next two, that people are indoors more than they will be in about two more months, we'll probably have a nice lull in the summer like we did last year. Of course, you know, there's always the possibility of new variants or surges. And we, the state is tracking those and looking for trends right now. Most of what we're seeing is still Omicron. It's not VA2. If I remember my data correctly, the last sequencing they did, I think there were only four cases of VA2, which is out of 300 or 400 sequences that they did. So most of what we're seeing is still Omicron. The question was asked the other day, if we're seeing leftover Delta, that doesn't seem to be mostly 96% of what we're seeing is Omicron. Contact tracing was going to begin to focus. I have to say that because they're telling us the new rules, but they're not changing it in the system for a month. So we're going to do our best to shift to the new rules, which are we're going to concentrate our efforts where they can make the most impact, which are congregate living, corrections, homeless shelters, nursing homes, assisted livings, those types of facilities, where if we detect somebody with COVID and we can quickly isolate them, we can prevent the spread to multiple other people. COVID's still a reportable disease, so cases are supposed to be reported to the health department. We will continue to provide vaccinations and testing for now, as well as test kits and some masks. I believe every library has 600 and some test kits. We are also working with other community providers to make sure test kits are available elsewhere in the community. For areas that don't have public libraries, we've been looking at trying to work with firehouses to see if we can get test kits there. And they'll be willing to give them out during nights when they have bingo or other events. We have quite a supply right now of rapid home test kits. So I know the county's taking some. And we're looking at, you know, continually have operations for other agencies that might want to test their staff. We're going to continue to provide vaccinations. Right now, we're at the senior center. It's probably on the next slide. I want to say it's Wednesdays and Fridays, but I might be messing that up. We will likely remain there through April and then we'll be looking to bring those operations back to the health department once we kind of empty out our multipurpose room that's still filled with PPE and supplies. And we are testing right now at the health department Monday through Thursday and the RV at the back of the barking lot. Those dates will change at the end, the 18th. So that's the week of the 21st. Those dates and times will change and we'll have that up on our website when we'll be testing. We're going to continue to prepare and plan for future surges. We worked with the state today as local health officers to try to figure out, how do we try to understand how many people we will need if we start going from low to moderate to high? You know, how do we know? How, how many people do we need to ramp up? Because we are pulling back. We've let a lot of our contact tracing staff and a lot of our testing staff and vaccinators go because we're using them through agencies or through Maryland response because they're not needed. We're able to handle what we're doing right now. We're gradually resuming our normal functions. We still are doing curbside, just put that out there since I'm here because of a number of reasons. We have some renovations going on in the building. We have a MDH security incident, which I have computers lining all the hallways, being scanned every day. And I have a room full of PPE. So there's not a lot of room for other people to be walking around in there. There's a lot of risk for injury, so we're preventing that. Last slide, I think? Vaccination clinics are, oh, Wednesday and Friday, 3:30 to 6:30. We're doing all ages. Oh, I think Pfizer and Moderna, I believe the state's moved away from J&amp;J, but we have a small stock left if that's the only thing somebody wants to get. We're doing testing from 9:00 to 1:00, Monday through Thursday. Test kits are at the libraries, I've said all this. Next slide is, I think, the reasons why people would still continue to mask. And we're just, you know, saying that it's, you know, an individual person's right to decide if they mask or not. I personally mask because I'm immunocompromised. I also have elderly parents who are in their 80s. And, you know, but if you work in healthcare, you might still be masking. If you haven't gotten around to deciding if you want to get vaccinated yet, you might want to continue to mask. You have a chronic illness, you want to protect your family, but it's an individual right. So I thought they came up with a really nice slide. They did a lot of work on that to try to get people to understand. I think that was our last slide. I just wanted to kind of lay the groundwork of why the change and what changed. Because it took me until I saw the CDC presentation. I watched it three times. And I, I got it now.
And thank you very much. We have a few questions. I think Ms. Pataga had her card up first.
I was going to say, I do like this. I think it's very important that we make sure that, you know, we have this out in the school, you know, why someone still might. Yeah, I told my daughter the other day, I said, you know, prior to COVID, if we saw someone in a mask, you know, we automatically assumed it was because they had cancer or they're going through chemo or they wanted to stay healthy or whatever, what they were doing. You know, we just understood that. And the same still needs to continue. As we still need to understand that some people prefer to wear one. And I think that's a great image that we can portray in the school system of S2Y and making sure our students and our parents know that it's okay. You know, if someone else is, they're no different. It's just, it's something they prefer to do. Thank you for everything.
No, you're welcome.
Dr. Lockard?
Yeah, I was just going to follow up with a comment there. You know, we were careful in the communication that we sent out to, to explain just that, that, you know, individual choices of families, of students, we'll respect whatever that is as it relates to masking. There's lots of reasons for that. And certainly that, that is now individual choice. And, and we, Ms. Gaddis helped us with making sure that message was sent on a couple of occasions. We also, you know, want to report, thank you for all the, you know, continued data and information. We had a relatively uneventful transition, gosh, a week ago? Week ago, yeah, I guess.
It feels like it's been so long ago, but it hasn't.
And so we're really appreciative of how sort of smoothly that went in terms of transitioning. We had obviously communicated a lot up until that point. I think folks knew that was what, what was going to happen. And I want to thank our, our families, our staff, our school administrators as well for helping with that transition.
And, and then I've got, I'll lead up to a question, but the last speaker's talked about community and everybody getting along. And I hope we're getting closer to that. And, and we need to protect the vulnerable. And thanks to what you guys and staff and Dr. Lockard have done, I think 85% of our teachers are probably vaccinated. And they're the most vulnerable ones in the school building. And the kids typically are not. There are some, and they can wear a mask. They're welcome to wear a mask, encouraged to wear a mask. I do think our nurses, like our other educators, are overworked. And, and I think we put them in some precarious situations. You had said in your slide about isolation guidance and et cetera, if you have symptoms. I think, and, and Mr. Streeker and Dr. Lockard and a couple other staff try to educate me, so bear with me. But I think the Maryland Health Department still tells the nurses, if there's one symptom, they need to react to it. And what's happened in the last two weeks that I'm aware of, and, and again, like, like I said earlier, I'm doing this because I love kids and, and I don't care which kids they are. And that's one of the things you have taught me. We want to teach, we don't want to bully anybody. We want to treat them all equally. Well, last week, a girl was worried she had strep, took Thursday off, went to the doctor. Doctor tested her, said, "No, you don't." "How do you feel?" She said, "Well, my throat's better, but I was scared I had strep." He said, "Go back to school." She gets to school and the nurse says, "I'm sorry, you can't be in school until you have a test." And she said, "The doctor said I don't need a test." And technically, I think the nurse is correct. But that's not a good position to be in. It gets worse. Yesterday, at a middle, but these were both middle schools, at another middle school, a young man went to the nurse and said, "I have a headache." And he or she said to the student, "That's a symptom of COVID. You need to wear a mask for five days." The kid went home and went off. And I don't much blame him. Masks, and, and the message I got last night is I thought masks were optional. Well, to me, if he's recovering from COVID, there's cases where he should wear a mask, not because he has a headache. Masks kind of give me headaches. But is there anything we can do with, on the state level? I honestly wanted to send an email to the state, copy you, copy people here. And I've had a few things going on that I didn't get time. But what, what can we do? I just feel like the nurses are totally overworked, stuck in a position. They have licenses they worry about, which you're more aware than I am. And, and I just don't know what we can do. And I don't want families being mad at the nurse because it's not her fault or his fault. But so, that's, that's my question. What can we do?
Well, we've been pushing for guidance from the state because we feel like it's MSD's and MDH's decision to come together to say what should be happening. Because we've asked a couple of questions and we've kind of just let it go. We've, we asked questions yesterday. We said, "Well, you know, if the healthcare facilities technically are following the old guidance and you have a health room and people are coming in who have COVID-like symptoms, should they be asked to put a mask on because they're sitting there with other people?" And they were like, "Well, that probably makes sense." But they never gave an answer. And that's what we're struggling with. So we're struggling with the exact, and I'm just being honest with you, that we're struggling with the exact same thing that you're struggling with. Because technically, if somebody's been out with COVID, the answer that we got was that if they came back to school after five days, they had two choices. They could have a test that showed they were negative, or they had to mask for the next five days, or they had to stay out for 10 days, for the total 10 days. That's never been put in writing anywhere. But it was said in three different presentations. So we're not pushing anything until we have guidance that we can give to you in black and white to say, "This is what we've been told is supposed to happen." Because we're getting the same, verbally, we're being told something or verbally, we're told something and when we contact them and say, "So I, just so I understand this correctly, this is what you said in the presentation yesterday." And the one answer we got was, "Did I really say that?" And we were like, "Yeah." And lots of people heard you, but we didn't want to act on it until we confirmed because this is what we heard you say. And they were like, "I didn't mean to say that." So I think two things are happening. I think that they're working on the next iteration of contact tracing, case investigation, those types of things. But in addition to that, I, I think they're trying to stay up to date with what we're currently doing. And I think sometimes the messaging is being confused and we're not willing to go on the line and have any communications with anybody until we have it in writing. So right now, you know, we've been told a health room could, it, it, yes, it's highly suggested that you would put a mask on if you go into the health room, especially if you're having a symptom. If they went to the doctor and they were tested, if they came back with a doctor's note, I would say that the symptom was not related to COVID because the doctors already ruled that out. That would be my assumption, that the doctor had ruled that out. So I think we have to use common sense, which I think we've stopped using for a while here. Not everybody, but in general, that we've been so focused on, "Oh, my gosh, that's a symptom." And, and we screen every day. I have to be screened every day. And I have said from the beginning, if you think with my chronic condition, that I can ever say that I don't have some of these things. But I have to rate it on, is this unusual for me? You know, this is my status quo and is this different? And, and most people who have a chronic condition know this is, you know, how I feel normally and this is different. My fatigue is different or my, you know, but, you know. If any of us that can say we worked that first year of COVID and didn't have a headache on a daily basis are fooling ourselves. And that's one of the symptoms. So if I had to be tested every time I had a headache. But, you know, we do have to also, if somebody's got a runny nose and a cough and things like that, that are more upper respiratory, yeah, and we need to err on the side of caution. But in that case, I would say she went to the doctor and she was ruled out and we should have accepted that, but.
It's just, I think it's unfair and hard on the nurses that they're making those decisions every day. And, and again, I, if somebody says a mask in the health room, you know, that's fine. But but if the only way they can come to school is wear a mask when they've had no positive test and don't have COVID, you know, that's unreasonable. So thank, I knew you'd have a, a very clear, simple answer for me, but no, thanks. Thanks, you say the truth.
I'm sorry. That's all I can do, speak the truth, you know? It is, it's a very interesting time, and I think that nurses are very concerned that they've been put in a very precarious situation, and they're asked to be making the decisions that they shouldn't have to make. If it, if what's needed is a test, then we should get the test and put them out of that position, or if it's already been ruled out, we should allow them to use that judgment.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hey, thank you very much.
Nope, oh, I will not be here next month, but I will let Maggie and Dr. Wapp flip a coin for who gets to come. I'm out of town at a conference, so I just wanted to tell you all that and just not, not show up next month. So I will get somebody to come if you still want an update.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Lockard, do you have anything else relating to COVID update? Okay. Um, board member activities and correspondence. Go ahead.
Do we want to read these first?
Yeah, why don't we? Um, because Ms. Zvingney's just on the screen, I get to do one. Um, so let me start. Uh, School Breakfast Week. This week, March 7th through 11th, is National School Breakfast Week, celebrating the importance of a nutritionist's school breakfast in fueling students for success. This year's theme, Take Off With School Breakfast, reminds students and parents that a healthy school breakfast helps ensure students' academic success in school, so they can take off and reach their goals. If your child hasn't tried a school breakfast, now is a great time to do so, and for now, it's free.
Youth Art Month and Music in Our Schools Month. During the month of March, we are highlighting two of our fine art programs to recognize art education as an essential part of the curriculum and life experience. Youth Art Month encourages support for quality school art programs and provides a special opportunity for us to feature the wonderful artwork created by our very talented students. Artwork by our high school students is being displayed through, through April 1st in the Langdon Gallery in the Carroll Community College. Um, elementary and middle school art will be displayed at the Carroll Arts Center from April 25th through May 7th. Music in Our Schools Month is an opportunity for music teachers to bring their programs to the attention of the school and the community, and to display the benefits that school music brings to students of all ages. Our schools will be, will soon begin presenting their spring vocal and instrumental concerts, as well as their plays. And we encourage members of the community to show their support and enjoy some great music and theatrical performances.
National Middle Level Education Month. March is also National Middle Level Education Month. This is a time to recognize why it is so important to provide students in the middle grades with the support they need to succeed both academically and personally. The skills, habits, and values established during this time have a lifelong influence that directly impacts a student's chances for a successful and healthy future. So we thank our administrators, teachers, and staffs at the middle schools for all they do for our students.
National Athletic Trainers Month. March is National Athletic Trainers Month, and we are proud to have Nova Care Rehabilitation Life Bridge provide athletic trainers to all of our high schools. Nova Care's certified athletic trainers are trained to meet the needs of all athletic departments with services including injury and illness prevention, and wellness promotion, evaluation, assessment and diagnosis, immediate and emergency care, therapeutic intervention, healthcare administration, and professional responsibility. Thanks to all of those individuals for keeping our athletics healthy and safe. And this is the first time I can ever remember, in the six years I've sat up here, that not one person is on the right-hand side
I just noticed.
of the room. And we have one visitor, thank you.
Um, do you want to start with the activities?
Sure.
We're going the other way.
All right. Very simple. Um, I went to a security meeting after the board meeting last month, and of course, I can't talk about that. Um, I went to the chamber luncheon, and Ted talked about the doom and gloom budget. He was a little positive, but at the end, it was still doom and gloom. Um, I went to Mr. Weaver's Commissioner, um, Weaver's Town Hall at North Carroll High School. Of course, I love that school, and, uh, there was great participation, there was a lot of people there, and I was the very first person that asked a question, and I was very concerned about Mr. Pausen's sign. Um, I went to the state of the county, I went to the joint meeting with commissioners. And for any of you that were here last month, um, I told my little story about the State Department, and how they sent me an email, and I called them right before I came into the meeting. Well, I just wanted to keep you posted, that the State Department has still not called me back, so. I, and I'm going to keep you up to date on that, because we really do need to have a more user-friendly, uh, Maryland State Department of Education. Thank you.
Dr. Dreszyn.
Okay, thank you. I participated in or attended the following activities. February 18th, the Educational Equity Council meeting for the county. We had discussions and updates on regional plans and needs. I attended on February 23rd, the MAB Board of Directors meeting, and on February 25th, MAB's Educational Equity Committee meeting. I too, um, attended the Chamber Luncheon and the State of the County, um, that was held at the Carls, Carroll Arts Center. And on this past Saturday, I had the opportunity to go to Westminster High School for the Carroll County History Day, and Celebrating America, America History Expo. Um, it was very interesting, because we had students, um, with their work on display in the media center, and I had the opportunity to converse with the students about their projects, and their specific takeaways of the topics that they used, um, and how those topics related to the theme Debate and Diplomacy in History: Successes, Failures, and Consequences. And the students were very well-versed and very familiar, um, with their topics. And I also heard presentations from the Celebrating America groups, um, that were present that day. We heard from the Historical Society of Mount Airy, the Strawbridge Shrine, Union Mills Homestead, the Carroll County Coalition of the Maryland Lynching Memorial, and the Historical Society of Carroll County. But I would like to ask, if I could spend a few moments, um, just, um, sharing of reflection, I would like to respectfully acknowledge the life and some contributions of a Carroll County icon, the late Mr. Stan Chase. Um, a lot of you, um, might remember Mr. Chase. Mr. Chase was a history and physical education teacher, as well as coach, at the formerly segregated Robert Moton Consolidated School. He had shared that a pinnacle in his career was leading the 1959 boys' basketball team to a Class D state championship. He received accolades for other sports teams that he coached throughout the years as well. When Robert Moton Consolidated School closed in 1965, Mr. Chase became a teacher at Sykesville High School, and he continued to coach teams there. When Sykesville High School became Sykesville Middle School, Mr. Chase continued as the physical education teacher there, and later became vice principal. He retired from Carroll County Public Schools in 1995. Over the years, Mr. Chase became a longtime, much-decorated game official and member of various official associations. He served as the head referee at the first football high school game played at the Ravens Stadium, um, a game between City and Poly back in 1998. Here in our county, Mr. Chase was inducted in the Carroll Sports Hall of Fame, class of 2002. His contributions are numerous, and he participated in various organizations, and he certainly touched and mentored many generations of young lives, and he was a friend to many of us here in Carroll County and beyond. So I end by sharing just three lines of a poem, um, that were included, um, in his farewell. And it's from a poem by Robert Louis Stevenson, "That Man Is a Success." And the few lines that I will quote, "That man is a success, that man is a success, who looked for the best in others and gave the best he had." So we certainly, um, you know, are appreciative for the memories and the connections that Mr. Chase had here in Carroll County. So thank you for allowing me time to do that.
Thank you. Um, as we go back across, I'll go. Went to the county budget luncheon, attended the MSD meeting where I was able to give public comment, and I did get to talk directly to a few of the, uh, people on the board, Mrs. Herbert, so they did talk to me, so, uh, I don't know. Um, did the joint meeting with commissioners, attended MAB Legislation Committee meeting. Um, and I attended, uh, Manchester Valley High School Wrestling Banquet. I joined in on the Carroll County Board of Elections meeting this morning to try to see when or where we're going to have a primary election. I ended up getting work calls and had to drop off of it, but, but, um, they, they are working. I don't envy them with what they've been handed this year. I just want to slip back to Manchester Valley's High School Wrestling Banquet. It was great to be there. Um, I had a few things go on in my life lately, and I did go to the regional wrestling tournament on, on the past Saturday, and then of course, states were this Saturday, and Carroll County, which you're probably going to mention the names, but they were represented very well. Man Valley in particular had three boys qualify who took first, third, and third, and six girls qualify that were second through fifth, every one of them placed in states. And, uh, and, and the other county schools did just as well. We were very well represented this year at the state wrestling tournament.
Well, I've been a little busy, finally. I'm, I'm glad to be out and about and doing stuff. February 15th, we had the Curriculum Council Meeting here in the boardroom, where we discussed the, um, apprenticeship program and the need for a staff member to have that program for our school system. Uh, we discussed esports, and potentially how global, uh, community citizenship can be implemented in our schools. So, February 17th, I attended the Chamber of Commerce Luncheon and heard about the county budget. Um, we also had our CAC meeting, which was held virtually, where Mr. O'Neill explained, um, the operating budget and the capital budget to the parents for the schools. February 21st was the Town Hall hosted by Commissioner Weaver at North Carroll High School, and what will be happening to the building, and how it will remain in use for the community, the rep programs and the arts it serves for the children, and continued use for the Sheriff's Department Training Program. And Mr. Weaver, again, thank you for making sure that goes through. It is really much needed. Um, February 23rd, we had our joint meeting here at the county commissioners. February 28th, I, uh, drove down to Annapolis, which I love Annapolis at night, it is so beautiful, and I attended the District Five, uh, night that was hosted by Senator Reedy, delegates, uh, Susan Krebs, April Rose, and Haven Shoemaker. Um, it was really good to hear some of the legislation that is being worked on, which, um, a few were about education. Um, I just want to thank them for representing Carroll County and for all the hard work they've also done on our end, um, for legislation and working with everything down there, and letters they have sent over the past few months. Um, March 1st, speaking of community centers, I was not able to attend it, but there was a groundbreaking ceremony for the Charles Carroll Community Center, and I am so happy this is finally taking place. Um, I did want to give a shout out to Commissioner Boucher, who, uh, showed up as Chippy, from what I understand, looked pretty cute in his little Chippy costume. So, I, um, I'm just very appreciative that that's finally happening, because it is so needed in that community. March 5th, I attended a Westminster High School class of 2023 Designer Bag Bingo, um, with my daughter. Um, so she's graduating next year for, from Man Valley, um, and a lady I know, her daughter, of course, is class of 23 from Westminster, so, uh, as a mom, another mom, I wanted to show support for our kids, um, and I think it's something that's really beneficial for everyone to do in the community, something I've always advocated for, and we had such a good time. Um, different various events, and I've heard from many parents, um, regarding questions and concerns, so I do want, you know, everybody to know that we've been doing that. Um, so yesterday was national, uh, International Women's Day, and, um, I'm blessed to be with some amazing women up here on the dais, and some amazing women that work here in this facility, in our school system. Um, being a woman can have its challenges, but it is also very rewarding. As a wife, and a mom, and a daughter, a sister, and a friend, I would rather help another woman feel valued and loved than bring them down. There is so much to be celebrated and to be thankful for as a woman, because in some areas of the world, women are looked down on, and they have no rights. We are very lucky in America, and we also see what's happening in Ukraine, and we think, my God, how horrible and how blessed we are, but how horrible it is for them. One of my most favorite women, who is a American icon actually, is Dolly Parton. Uh, yes, she is a woman of her own. She came from nothing, and made her way through a man's world. When she was told she couldn't do something, she proved so many wrong. And I'd like to share just a couple of her inspirational quotes, um, where as a woman, I think I can relate to, and many others can. Storms make trees take deeper roots. Above everything else I've done, I've always said I've had more guts than I've got talent. Find out who you are, and do it on purpose. You'll never do a whole lot unless you're brave enough to try. If you see someone without a smile, give them one of yours. So, there's strong women everywhere, and may we know them, may we be them, and may we raise them. And I think it is important that we, we definitely value who we are. I did want to congratulate our Man Valley wrestling team and the girls' basketball team, don't forget about them. Oh, yes, that was awesome to hear, that they've done very well. Proms are right around the corner, and oh my, I don't know how you do it. Uh, my daughter's already, I gotta get a dress, I'm like, ew, I'm not ready for that. Um, so I just finished my, uh, social psychology, and I'm getting ready to start my intro into criminology, so, come on, spring, let's go.
And I'd like to follow up with a quick point, after she mentioned Man Valley also, and the girls' basketball, who, uh, I'd, I'd get beat up if I didn't acknowledge that. The girls' basketball team and the, the wrestling and, men, boys and girls at the banquet all went out of their way to thank the board for making sure they were in school and allowed to play, and they feel strongly that's one of the reasons why they're doing well this year, is because they didn't have to sit on the sidelines. So, and I should have mentioned that before, they, they said, please thank the board, so I did. Ms. Menstry.
All right. Um, on February 24th, I attended the CCSJ Schrob Elect Primary Election. Um, in this virtual primary, the CCSJ General Assembly elected, uh, two candidates to advance onto the general election. As Jamie previously mentioned, we will be meeting with our county's high school principals sometime later this week to plan for our Schrob Elect General Election, and if all things work out, we expect to hold our general election in late March, where all high school students will be able to vote. Um, on February 28th, I was able to attend the annual African-American Read-In at Carroll Arts Center. Um, this was the first time I attended this event, um, and I honestly regret not having gone in the past, uh, because it was a truly phenomenal experience, and I really hope more students get to experience that, um, in the upcoming years. Um, and again, the students who participated made really, really powerful statements. Um, yesterday, CCSJ had an executive board meeting, uh, where we planned for the general election, CCSJ Officer Elections, and Maryland Advocacy Day. Um, additionally, during the month of March, I took part in the Carroll County Mock Trial County Championship and Circuit Championship as a competitor, um, on the Liberty High School Mock Trial Team, and I just wanted to congratulate all the students who participated in that. Um, as I've stated before, as someone who did mock trial before COVID-19, I was really worried that the program would die off, um, this year, but that was not the case at all. And it was really wonderful to be able to compete in person at the courthouse again. Thank you.
And last but not least, our West Coast member.
Thanks, Mr. Kyler. Uh, I'll try to keep my comments, uh, very brief, uh, but I am out of town on a business trip, uh, this week, so thank you to everyone for, uh, helping make it possible for me to attend virtually. Um, I think that we, we probably, just a quick side note, that we, we probably need to address our, our policy for attendance, um, of board members and, and voting practices, just, so to probably make it a little bit more official, um, about how we treat virtual attendance versus in-person attendance. Um, so I just wanted to, uh, say thank you for, for allowing me to, to attend virtually, and we should probably, uh, address that quickly at a, at a future meeting. Um, but just real fast, um, But just real fast, I did attend the joint commissioners meeting last month, and I just want to continue to thank the commissioners for their commitment to having those open and honest transparent communications on a regular basis with the board. I think that those are really important meetings continue to have going forward. We also had our curriculum and instruction meeting, as Ms. Pataglia talked about earlier. Talking, we have some really great subjects that we're going through and having discussions, pretty robust discussions on things like apprenticeships, esports, ag clubs, and especially our extended learning opportunity results and from the programs that we've had in place and how we want to continue those moving forward. So some really great topics there, and I would like to propose that when we do publish the minutes from those meetings, that we at least attach those minutes as sort of an informational item to the board on a regular basis, just because there are some really great things being discussed, and I want to make sure the rest of the board stays up to speed on all of those. And similarly, we also had the second meeting of the Family Life Committee this past month, and we spent most of the time reviewing the comprehensive health education framework standards and had some really robust discussions, some tough discussions. And I just want to thank the members of that committee for their commitment and for being willing to have those discussions. We didn't make any decisions. It was just kind of going through, understanding the framework. But there will be decisions being made in the near future, and those will be captured in minutes that I again, think we should be including to board members, just to make sure that they're up to speed on what is happening on these committees. So I think that's it. I did want to actually thank Mr. Kyler for testifying at the state hearing on the board's behalf. You did a great job, and thank you for that. And I also wanted to throw out a thank you to our delegation for their strong support in this last month as we were moving forward with our masking optional efforts. So I think that's it. Thanks very much, Mr. Kyler.
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
Thank you. Good evening. I want to start by recognizing our very own Davanchi Mistery, student representative on the board. She's received the Outstanding Student in Gifted and Talented Education Award presented by the Maryland Gifted and Talented Advisory Council. Davanchi, who many of you know is a senior this year, has been an advocate for promoting and advocating for advanced academic opportunities for our student, for our students in her role as student representative. She's challenged herself academically throughout her time as a student, taking, I believe, a total of nine AP classes so far, participating in dual enrollment opportunities and taking classes at Carroll Community College through that, undertaking an independent study in music as a senior. And she's also certainly excelled in leadership within the Carroll County Student Government Association, which we've all seen here at our board meetings. Davanchi, congratulations on this well-deserved award. You truly exemplify excellence in both academics and leadership, and we're very fortunate and have been very fortunate to have you here with us as a student representative as well. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yep. I'd also like to say congratulations to Abraham Bahadi, Technology Education Teacher at West Middle School. Abe received the New Teacher Award presented by the Technology and Engineering Educators Association of Maryland. This award recognizes new teachers with under three years of experience for outstanding contributions in technology and engineering classroom and beyond. Abe graduated from Westminster High School, where he developed his career goal to teach technology education. He began his teaching career in September of 2020. Not a ideal time to start your teaching career, September of 2020, but he made the most of it there at West Middle School. He took the opportunity to return to his roots, as he had also gone to West Middle School, and helped shape the education of students in our community. So congratulations to Abe on a well-deserved recognition. While we're handing out congratulations, we're going to say congratulations to Alexa Goldblum. She's a seventh grader at Sykesville Middle School, placed second in the Together We're Better Artwork Contest for middle schools, which was sponsored by ARC of Maryland. Together We're Better is a school inclusion program designed to raise awareness of the value and importance of inclusion of students with disabilities. One component of the program is an art contest for elementary and middle school students. Alexa was recognized during a virtual awards celebration as part of the annual Development Disabilities Day at the Maryland State Legislature. She's going to receive a $50 gift card, and the school will receive $200. So congratulations, Alexa. And finally, we'll try to culminate all of our winter sports champions and really say congratulations to all of our winter athletes and coaches and volunteers and all that go into making up such a great part of our school experience. Extracurriculars and athletics are a really important part of our school experience, and we're glad to have so many students participating. So we want to congratulate our regional championship teams, Century Girls Indoor Track, South Carroll Wrestling, Liberty Boys and Girls Basketball, and Francis Kyee Boys Basketball. South Carroll Wrestling went on to win the state championship. Our student athletes also brought home six individual state championships in wrestling and 10 in indoor track and field. So too numerous to name them all, but congratulations to all those students, student athletes, our coaches, and those that have supported them, and we look forward to a successful and exciting spring season.
Thank you. And we have no presentations tonight, so we'll go into reports, the first one being the Pillar Two update. Dr. Lockard?
Thank you. Thank you. So March is the month for a Pillar Two update from the strategic plan. Ms. Judy Jones and we also have some other staff members we shall introduce are here for a report with updates on our efforts to continue to strengthen family and community partnerships. Ms. Jones?
Thank you, Dr. Lockard, and good evening, President Kyler, members of the board, Commissioner Weaver. It gives me pleasure to give you the report on Pillar Two of our strategic plan, just to highlight what that focus is, is the communication between CCPS and the community will demonstrate transparency, trust, and respect. It also says that CCPS will seek out, welcome, and engage parent and community volunteers to enhance student achievement, as well as partner with local government, business, and agencies to support student learning. Before we get started, I would like to thank the following persons for their contributions to the report. That would be Ms. Brenda Bowers and Ms. Carrie Gaddis for our CAC report, Mr. Nick Shakni for giving us his report regarding our special education nights. I'd like to thank Ms. Marty Jody, who is here to talk about PTO, as well as the wonderful organizations and collaborations that we have with our community organizations. Ms. Patty Burns with her update information for her international hotline that is growing. Dr. Kendra Hart for her work with the Title I, and also Ms. Jen Seashell. And they are all here, except for, with the exception of Dr. Kendra Hart, but Ms. Jen Seashell is here in case you have any specific questions. Just to highlight what your report has, you will see again, it has an update on the CAC meetings, the CCPS International Phone Line data is there, the Special Education Families Support Nights, and then also the Title I families. We're excited because Title I collaborated with tech services and has created the Family Event Management System. So we're very excited about that. That information breakdown is in your report. As well as the Carroll County Council of Parent Organizations, they have been meeting regularly and having very beneficial discussions. That information is there as regards to members, the Carroll County Public Schools Tutoring Support, which we know during these times has been so instrumental and helpful, as well as the CCPS tutors and partners from around our county, and navigating difficult waters. And so that information is there, and just want to highlight that that will take place on next week, March 16th, at Winters Mill High School from 5:30 to 8:45 PM. So we know there's a wonderful collaboration with our local government to help with the social, emotional well-being of our students, and also to provide our families with resources with how to meet our students during still what we consider unprecedented times. So we are really excited about this report and proud of the work that has gone into it. And so at this time, I leave it open for you. If you have any specific questions, I will call the wonderful staff persons that are here to come up to address any questions or comments that you may have.
Dr. Lockard?
Thank you, Ms. Jones. I just want to make a general comment, and that is to say thank you. Thank you to all the folks who have contributed to that. You know, it's sort of counterintuitive. You would think what we've sort of been experiencing as it relates to the last year, well, plus, this data reflects the last year, though. You would think, oh, it would be a lot harder to engage folks, it would be a lot harder to get people to come together, and the opposite's been true. That's thanks to the efforts of all the folks in our system who are working in these goal areas. We are on track, we're ready to meet a lot of the priority goals that we had set in these areas, and that says a lot. Says a lot about the engagement of our community. It says a lot about our partners. It says a lot about the work that's happening in our schools and in our central office here to make sure that we are truly strengthening those family and community partnerships. So I just wanted to make sure that we recognize that.
Yes. It's quite phenomenal how they work with us.
Thank you. Ms. Herbert?
You might want to explain a little bit what navigating waters is and how important it is, because some people don't have a clue what that is. And the start time is at 5:30?
Yes. It's at 5:30. And I'll also invite Ms. Marty Jody up to the stand, and she's been working tirelessly to organize this. But just to say that at the start of the pandemic, we knew that certain concerns were coming forward in regards to student engagement and student well-being. And so the thought arrived that we needed to create a way to help not only the students but the families. We noticed that our students weren't necessarily doing well emotionally, socially, but also we had to understand that our parents also were struggling with the pandemic, how to cope, how to deal with it. They had their own stressors. So the idea came about, let's bring everyone together to see how we can help our families and students. So, Ms. Marty.
Well, this is actually going to be our third year that we're doing this. The very first year, Ms. Pataglia said something to Jason Anderson about these types of topics. And then we, I was meeting with the Carroll County Council of Parent Organizations, and the parents themselves said, we really need help in these areas, things like bullying and suicide prevention and so we, and addiction issues, things along those lines. So that's how that we started this along. Since then, we take the feedback from the parents and the people that come to the events. And last year, we had to do it virtually because we had to. This year, it is again in person. If you come at 5:30, from 5:30 to 6:30 is when you get to see the different organizations throughout the county that provide services. So they'll be there so parents can come in and do that. Also, starting at 5:30, will be childcare for anybody that is age three and up. I have some flyers that I'll put on the back table for you guys if you have not seen them so that you can, that you can join. But we have some events that are just for students, such as time management, and I believe that Davanchi had mentioned that one. And we have quite a few students, she's one of the people that's going to be presenting during that particular thing. We have some, one of the sessions is called Parenting, and the social media world, challenges, benefits, and the impact on mental health. Social media right now is one of the things that a lot of parents are having a huge concern about. And so this is something to hopefully help us through that, and that one's only for adults. Another one that's for adults is Suicide, Self-Injury, and What Can Parents Do to Help? Because not only do suicidal issues come up, but there's a lot of self-harm things that children are going through too. So this is something that parents want to know, how can I help my child? Sources of Strength, which is one of our programs here, is going to be presenting. That's going to be for the adults because the kids, for the most part, already know about it. We do have two different types of mindfulness sessions that are talking about how to cope with different types of coping skills. We're going to have some sessions that are going to be for kindergarten through fifth grade, and then some sessions that are going to be sixth grade through 12th grade. And they're going to be done with the different counselors in the system. The state's attorney's office is doing one called Threats in Plain Sight, and that's because a lot of our parents brought up issues that had to do with security in the school system, especially with some of the school shootings, not in Carroll County, but in other places. But there's so many people that see that on social media, and we need to know, how can we deal with that? And that's going to be also for adults. There's another one that's going to be for adults that is called Addiction and the Brain and How to Talk to Your Child. So those are things, and those are going to be done by the Health Department. So we have different groups that are doing things, state's attorneys, the Health Department. Then we're going to have one that's called the Power of Art. That's going to be for students only. And then we also have another one that's going to be with the role of the SRO, the School Resource Officers, because that's another thing that brought, that the parents have brought up, that they, they really don't understand what the, what is their role, what are they supposed to do, and how do they get about finding out information when something does happen in a school? So we're going to, we listen to the parents. The parents are the ones that drive this. And so that's how we do that. Each year, we do an evaluation survey. This year, we're going to have surveys after every single session. They're going to be QR codes where you can instantaneously do it, and we're going to use that information then to drive what we're going to do next year.
Thank you.
Ms. Herbert?
And I thought people need to know. The other thing is, how many, a two-part question. How many new partnerships have we obtained in the last two years due to COVID?
We actually have gotten, I don't know the exact number, I believe it's around a dozen.
Okay. And how many?
Some of them are, some of them are still in flux because there's some things that when you do a partnership, their lawyers need to look through some of the things that we expect, and then our lawyers sometimes need to look through the stuff that they expect, and so.
And have we lost any?
The only one that I know of that we've lost was Buchanan Kia, and we don't really know why. They just said they didn't want to be in partnership anymore. That's the only one I know of.
Wait, so that means no car?
As of right now. We've been trying. Because of COVID, every single car dealer that I have contacted.
Wow.
That they don't have, like the smaller ones, like one sober in Tawny Town, they only had one car, one new car on their lot. They were waiting for shipments of cars, and the shipment of cars that they had, 70% of them were already promised to people. So most of the places don't have cars and even use cars, they don't have a lot of those. So nobody had cars that they were able to just give us one, so.
Will we reach out and try to make that work again?
Yeah, every day. Carrie and Brenda and I have been working tirelessly trying to get somebody to help us out on that.
Very disappointing, but everything else is nice, but wow. Okay. Thank you.
But we do have a whole lot of really cool presents that the teacher there is going to get.
Ms. Pataglia?
I was just going to say, thank you so much. I'm glad to see just this one little idea I had of, let's try to do something with our community resources, has blossomed so much, and it has grown so much, and I'm so proud of the fact that we have this here in our county. I think it's phenomenal, and it's grown. I'm just so proud of it, and thank you for everything you guys have done to make it grow.
Well, we're really lucky because we had Dr. Lockard, who said, go with it. Not everybody just says, you know, go with it and let you, let you fly and try to do these things, and he was willing to do that. Every partnership, every community resource that we reached out to, they were thrilled to be able to do this. And when I've been at state meetings, especially last year, no one was doing this. No one. And so they all, we had more people from other counties that attended our sessions, and so some of the counties are actually trying to do this themselves, but we were in the forefront.
Why, doesn't that surprise me that Carroll County is the leader in certain things? And thank you, Dr. Lockard, for getting that, giving them the go-ahead.
Dr. Doyce?
I just wanted to comment that again, it's just great knowing that, you know, we do have a lot of mental and emotional needs, and our students certainly need resources. So I think that's certainly going to be a wonderful opportunity for students and parents. The one comment that I wanted to make, though, concerns the Title I nights. I know last time we were talking about, you know, how it was hard to have data from all of the schools, but I think by the collaboration with the tech services and with this management system that was put in place, I think that's helped to drive and give us the data that we really need about how many parents are actually attending the events that are planned.
Yes, and so I'm going to ask Ms. Seashell to come up and to speak to how far we are and how we're doing, and having conversations with Dr. Kendra Hart. and how we're doing. And having conversations with Dr. Kendra Hart, we do know that there were some glitches with the system that made us a little skeptical about presenting any data, because we weren't sure how screwed it would be. But I would like you to come and talk about it, because this is the brain behind it. We have geniuses in here, and so kill me later. It's true.
So, yeah, we worked with the Title I parent liaisons to develop the system that they are using now to track those events. It's nice, because we're actually able to track, not just at the student attendance, but also like at the family level. So if we have multiple students for a single family in the building, we can provide numbers that way. And initially, it's just at the building level that we're doing this, but we hope to expand it to include countywide activities. So that's, it's sort of in a pilot mode right now, with the idea to expand it further. So it was good, though. It was really nice to collaborate with them and get their feedback and work together on it.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
COVID-19 fiscal report. Dr. Lockhart?
So this is the monthly fiscal impact report. There are a couple minor adjustments as we continue to reconcile expenditures, looks like for extended learning mostly.
Board members, any questions? The construction report. Dr. Lockhart?
So our monthly construction report provides updates on our two major renovation projects. I'm pleased to share that the small fire in the culinary arts program was minor. Great response by the students and our staff there. We're thankful it was very minor, and there were no, all students were, staff were safe. But it was contained. It doesn't impact the construction project at all. And so if you have any questions about the school construction report, Mr. Marx is available, I think. Is Mr. Marx here? Oh, there he is.
I have maybe not a question, but a comment and a question for board members. I'd like to see, if possible, could you guys set up, whatever the appropriate time is based on construction, a tour for each of the sites that maybe board members could attend, maybe commissioners, and get an idea just to see what's going on. And I know there's different phases and maybe different times. Last time, you made me walk through the mud, but you'll be nicer to them. But could we line up something like that?
Yes. Yes, and we will. Yes. I know one of the commissioners had requested a chance to take a look, and then we had spoken about setting that up as well for our board members. And I think there are certain milestones, if you will, that might be good times to do that. Want to comment on that, Jim?
Yeah, real brief. On the 17th, we're taking Commissioner Boucher through. You all are certainly welcome to join us if you wish.
Yeah, we'll send that information, but we'll also provide a time for board members as well.
The 17th, I'm in Detroit watching college wrestling, so I'm sorry. Here, I ask you to do it, and then I say I can't. Sorry.
I just want to say, that's a beautiful mud pile we have over there. I'm enjoying watching that just get bigger and bigger, and the dirt move and move.
The big cranes there for steel coming.
Beautiful steel work going on over there on Washington Road. I'm loving it, every moment of it.
It's not green anymore.
Definitely not green like it was at the groundbreaking, right?
Thank you.
You got it.
Blueprint implementation report.
Okay, so Mr. O'Neill's here with our monthly blueprint implementation report, which details changes proposed to the blueprint, sorry, timelines.
Tough one tonight.
Yes, blueprint timelines at the state level. John?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for tonight's report. I think Ms. Bowers is going to load it on the, there we go. For tonight's report, we just wanted to focus on some of the significant changes to the implementation timeline that's underway at the state. And so, are we good? There we go. And so, in the middle of the last month, both the State Department of Ed, the state superintendent, and the Accountability Implementation Board, they're meeting almost every two weeks, if not, if not every two weeks, then every month. They discussed the need to, given sort of the delayed start, to maybe adjust some of the timelines. And we've talked about how that might be important, if some of those changes could occur. And so by the middle of the month, the AIB was briefing Ways and Means, and that turned into a bill, House Bill 1450 specifically. Actually received a hearing yesterday in appropriation, so it's moving forward. And so what the bill would do, what the state-level changes would be to the timelines, would be only to adjust the timelines for the overall implementation plan, for the comprehensive implementation plan. There has to be a state model, and then specific guidance sent out to locals from MSDE based on that state model. And then each of us at the local level will have to submit a comprehensive implementation plan. And so you can see, if you look at the chart on this slide, the middle column is what was in the original blueprint law as enacted, and the proposed column is what House Bill 1450, if passed, would change those timelines, too. So that would be great. It would be great to have more time and to receive more guidance and to understand what elements are going to need to be in our comprehensive implementation plan before we move forward trying to develop it. And so in that sense, it's helpful. It's also helpful to those state agencies, one of which is just getting up and running, and the other one is in a bit of transition as well, trying to understand the blueprint. So overall, I think that's, you know, that's good news. But some other things to consider, House Bill 1450 adjusts only the timelines for the comprehensive implementation plan. It doesn't change any of the other due dates or timeline dates that exist in the law. So things with teacher salary, things with college and career-ready, that sort, those sort of dates, pre-K implementation. The State Department of Ed, just this past Monday, I believe, was the last AIB meeting, where the state superintendent treasury presented again to the AIB. He actually, in his presentation, added some proposed dates he was bringing for changes to the college and career-ready timelines. And it's nice that state officials are thinking this way. I guess one thing that sort of, one of the discussions Dr. Lockhart and I were having that day and since was, you know, that the timeline for the General Assembly this year is running out, and any of these dates that would be changed need to be changed through legislation. So I am concerned there's a bit of a disconnect on how much time is left to make these changes. And, you know, we've talked about this in the budget process discussions. There's still a little lingering concern that we have, that even though it's good to get a delayed implementation or a delayed date for our overall comprehensive implementation plan, we still, you still, will be making budgetary decisions now for next year, and it'll be sometime after that before our plan is submitted, reviewed, and approved. So there's, I don't really want to use the word risk, but there's some opportunity that, you know, we might find out sort of after the fact, oh, the state's expectations in a certain area, or with a certain column of funding was this, but without that guidance upfront, we went ahead and budgeted that. So there might be some weirdness to this first year until all of this gets sorted out, and everything can be on sort of one dovetailed timeline together. So I think that's it for tonight, unless there are questions and discussions.
Any questions?
I just worry where all this money's going to come from. I mean, it's just horrible.
It's interesting to watch this unfold.
It's...
Money and the implementation seems to be maybe lacking.
Guidance, lack of guidance, yeah.
Kenny?
Yes.
I just have one question. As we move to the Stadium Authority to ask for money for new construction or updating, is that, how's that going to work? Do you have any idea yet?
Sure, very, very well for us. So you're referring, I think, to the Build to Learn Act from a couple of sessions ago. That's the, sort of the pool of money that's beyond the traditional capital CIP program through the Stadium Authority or MSA. We were one of the very first in line with the East Middle Project, saying we have something that's almost shovel-ready here. We'd like to apply right away, even before they had procedures in place. And so the state funding, which is full commitment that's coming for East Middle, is Carroll County's share of the Build to Learn Act. So I don't, there might be a couple other counties with, maybe Modern, one other county, but we were maybe the first in line with a shovel-ready project. So that money, it's great to have, because without it, the state wouldn't have been able to fund Career and Tech and East Middle at the same time. But all of our take, at least from the first version of how, of the Build to Learn Act, is...
I guess questioning as much as anything here, in the future years, you know, we're going to have other projects coming up, and we're just starting the budget and looking at up to 28 in the future years. You think with the Stadium Authority, it's going to give us an advantage, more funding coming to us in like '26, '27? You have any idea?
And to piggyback that, I think there was a concern probably by you, I know it was by me, that when this transition, there would be new hurdles, or new inspections, or new problems with it. But so far, you guys haven't seen too many negatives, have you?
We have not. And I don't want to say too much, but we were so early in line that we were kind of in front of their development of whatever procedures ultimately will be in place. To answer your question, Commissioner Weaver, I'm not sure. I can tell you, it's something that has a lot of bipartisan support. They committed a lot of money statewide to the first version of House Bill One, Build to Learn. But there's the possibility that in future years, there could be a reauthorization and another pool of money. There's also, separate from that, a lot of discussion at the state level right now with the General Assembly in session, that the traditional state capital pool of money needs to be increased to a floor of more like $400 million or higher. So that's something that's, you know, that's very much part of a state discussion. And if either of those numbers go up, then that's good for, you know, for Carroll County ultimately. The state also, in lesser amounts of money, is making some, I think, are we still on board with the Healthy Schools Fund? So the state is, in very recent months, even after you voted on your capital request in October, is suddenly informing our staff that other carve-out pockets of money in the state capital program that previously we had, we did not believe in, had not been informed, were available to us. Now they're telling us to apply for. And so, for instance, the Spring Garden HVAC project, which you funded, you committed to, but the state wasn't able to fund yet, they're now telling us to move that forward through the Healthy Schools Fund, which originally, I think the original intent was that was the money through which the city schools and some others could put air conditioning in all their buildings and that sort of thing. So, you know, some more state money's coming in, not the kind of state money that would result in a major modernization project like a Career and Tech. Apparently, I've said something wrong, because here comes Ray.
Maybe we both did.
Fine. I just wanted to, to Mr. Kyler's question. We are in the process of developing an MOU that has to be executed between the board, Maryland Stadium Authority, and the commissioners. And we are, we were just finalizing that now, which will define the roles and the responsibilities and the authority through the process. Because we were ahead of the game, though, yes, we're good with the setup. We're good with the arrangement. There were some concerns at first, but they've been great, the MSA's been great to work with. That'll be coming next month. And this is what might have generated these questions somewhat. And there is still the concern that under the blueprint, there ultimately is an unaccounted-for capital cost. And I am hopeful that the state will address that in future General Assemblies, for instance, pre-K.
Our major concern is down the road. I mean, this year, yes, we're fine in short term. I mean, short term within two years. But in the out years here, we're worried about, I think what Marcia said, where's the money coming from? Where, you know, is it going to be available? Is the state going to be able to work with us? Because, you know, with the two school projects, our money got used up pretty fast here. So we're now looking ahead, and you're going to need support in the out years for all kind of projects. We know that. You have too many buildings to maintain, not to ask for that. So we're looking long-term on this.
And I think, you know, if there's some good news or some hope, in a couple of years, the state funding should be complete for, well, east, but also getting near complete, hopefully, if they, if they, you know, when they commit to a project, it doesn't mean they commit to giving you all of their money in one year, but hopefully in a couple of years more, that they'll meet their commitment on Career and Tech, and then that should give us a little more flexibility in the overall state picture a few years down the road as well.
Thank you. Any more questions? Thank you. I see no more blue cards, so I need a motion, I'm sorry, I need a motion for the approval of a Ward of Bids.
So moved.
Dr. Dorsey made the motion, and Ms. Pataglia seconded.
All right.
Dr. Lockhart?
Board members, there's six items on this month's Award of Bids. I will tell you about each of those, and then we'll take questions. First one is elevator renovations at three high schools. Next, we have furnishing and installing dishwashers at two schools. And this is, this and the next item are from the Food Services Fund. The third one here, furnishing and installing a walk-in cooler and freezer. The fourth is resurfacing of the tennis courts at Man Valley High School. Fifth is a buying list for arts and craft supplies. And finally, number six, design and build of baseball and softball dugouts at Man Valley High School.
Ms. Herbert?
Two things. At Man Valley, no one else bid on that job?
For the dugouts, or for...
No, 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 no. For, at the, wait a minute, track, tennis courts. Was there, I see no one else bid on that? No? Okay, that's fine.
No, just one bidder.
Okay, and then the other thing I do have to say is that we do do bids, and I really was very sad that Evergreen didn't, builders didn't get it to do the dugouts. Very close, local guy, and you always want to give local people business. And I knew that he did a lot of behind-the-scenes work, and I was very sad to see that he didn't get the bid, but we have rules, so. And Mr. Kyler assured me that he had talked to the owner, because does a lot for the community.
He understands. But a question the boosters there had, but first, a question for you. How is that funded? How much of that is funded by the boosters, and how much work did they do to get it started?
The dugouts we're talking about?
Yes.
I believe 100% by the booster fundraising.
Yes.
That's booster-funded, yeah.
And I think that's important for other communities to see. This is on here, and it's happening, but because they raised the money. But...
Correct.
Yes, but now, sec, no, I'm sorry.
We might sometimes assist with a project with technical support, electrical, or something like that, but this is their money. You, as the fiscal agent, we have to follow state procurement laws, so it has to be bid, but it's their fundraising that's making it happen.
And the boosters ask on the bid results and valued the local person, and I explained it to them, and they accepted it. And he very much, he bids stuff every day, and any of us that bid stuff realize you don't get them all. The guy that doesn't get them all is out of business, probably. But what's the difference when you use technical points and evaluation versus when you just take straight-up a public bid? Because they asked, why couldn't that be an evaluation? And I said, that's not how it works. This was a straight-up public bid.
It's not how it works. And I'll have to look to Ms. Eisenberg, because I'm not 1,000% sure standing here, if it's in the state procurement regulations, but it's in your board policy on procurement, that the only scenarios in which we apply the technical point scenario that you talked about is for professional services, not for, you know, a commodity or for straight design construction, but something like architectural services, or if anybody has any other examples of the, the biggest one we deal with is A&E services for...
Well, for instance, tonight, the first item, the elevator, that's an inspection and an evaluation. That's not just building an elevator.
That's actually to replace the control panels, that we can no longer get parts or fix them. So that's to install new control panels, yeah.
Any other questions?
Well, I was just looking at, is it looking, Mr. Kyler? I was looking at the walk-in cooler and freezer at Mount Airy Elementary, going to Arbutus Refrigeration, and seeing that that wasn't the lowest bid. And I know this is coming through the food services funding, right?
Correct. That would be from the Enterprise Fund for Food Services. I can't answer that tonight. I'll have to get back to you and the board on that. And if you want to hold it, you can until I can answer that.
Well, I guess I was trying to read... Well, I guess I was trying to reason it in my head and thinking, okay, for number two, Arbutus was going to be working at Mount Airy Elementary for the installation of the dishwashing machine. So maybe the thought was, since it's already there, that company's already there.
It may well be sort of a pairing as well, but I'm, I'm not able to answer that. I consult with Ms. Cottner and let you know that for sure.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Any more questions? All those in favor?
I'm sorry, Mr. Kyler.
Oh, sorry.
Before we take the vote. So were we, based on your question, Dr. Dorsey, were we holding on the Arbutus Refrigeration to get an answer to that question? Or are we moving forward with that one?
We could move forward. You did say, Mr. Neal, that you would let us know, you know, again, why it went with that one.
Whatever's your pleasure. I can inform the superintendent to inform you to clarify and you can vote, or if you want to hold it, we'll bring it back to the April Award of Bids then. But, I mean, that's fine as well. It's, it's your discretion.
Is it going to slow up the process any?
I mean, obviously it will, but it will, is it, is it something you're working, it could be a summer install thing. There could be a timeline issue with summer install.
I'm comfortable if we vote with the understanding that we're going to get some more, because the, the explanation isn't as much about any specific specification of that bid as it is the process, right?
Well, why
Yes.
that was not the low bid that received the award.
Yes.
Whatever you're comfortable with is what we'll do.
Okay. Ms. Sevigny, you good?
Yeah, as long as we, we receive an explanation as for why, why the low bidder was not chosen for that one.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Approval of student appointments to the Carroll County Career and Tech Education Advisory Council.
So moved.
Ms. Pataglia made the motion?
I'll second that. I was looking at the screen, but I'll second that.
Donna, would you like to second?
I think Dr. Dorsey already did, right?
She did.
So she seconded. And Dr. Lockhart?
All right. So annually, Board, you appoint student reps from each high school to the Career Tech Ed Advisory Council. And I'm going to share with you the names of the following students who are recommended by their principal to appointment to this advisory council. And the term would go till June of '23. So John Alcorn from Winters Mill High School, Eva Brant, Century High School, Lillian Goleo, Westminster High School, Landon Holden, Century High School, Gerson Melendez Martinez, Manchester Valley High School, Andrew Monbe, South Carroll High School, Jordan Silence, Westminster High School, Mason Smith, Littlestown High School. Remember, we have a unique partnership there. Emily Teshidi, I'm sorry, Emily Tedeschi, did I get that right? Tedeschi, yes. Century High School, Francesca Walters, Francis Scott Key High School, Eddie Watson, Century High School, and Mathias Zawadzki, Manchester Valley High School.
Ms. Tree?
So I know for the past semester, we had student representatives from each high school represented on the Career, Career and Tech Advisory Council. But I noticed that Liberty High School isn't represented in this semester. I just wanted to know why.
Sure. So what happens with the start of each new group of students in the programs? Teachers work with students in their programs to get a representative who would be interested in serving on the local advisory council or the LEC. And so when students, students will either agree to, to serve, and if they can't get somebody, they'll, they'll continue to bug students. So really, it comes down to student choices as to whether they want to serve or not. So they open it up to all students in their programs.
Okay. And one minor thing, Emily's last name is misspelled in here. It should be
Thank you. We'll fix that.
Board members, any other questions?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Approval, I need a motion for the approval of the credit change order for East Middle School replacement project.
So moved.
Ms. Pataglia made the motion?
I'll second.
Ms. Sevigny seconded? You guys, you guys are never that nice to me.
Nope.
All right, board members. So this is a positive change order, a, a credit on the East Middle Project. So this is the kind of change order we like to have on projects. It's detailed in the agenda item there. And of course, staff are here if you should have any questions.
And technically, if I understand it right, if this were 45,000, we probably wouldn't be seeing it. But if they're over 50,000, it does have to come to the board, whether it's a credit or an additional amount of money for our approval.
That's correct. Yep.
Board members, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now I need a motion for the approval of appointments.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Board members, I'm bringing three recommendations for appointments this evening. First, we're recommending Ryan Kimble, a social studies teacher at Francis Scott High School, to athletic director at Francis Scott Key High School. Second, we're recommending Elizabeth Messick, who's currently a math teacher at West Middle, to acting assistant principal at West Middle. And finally, Morgan Pratt, a teacher from Howard County Public Schools, to assistant principal at Piney Ridge Elementary.
And I have one question, more just for everybody's benefit. I, I think it's, it's great and interesting that one of the positions was hired from another county, but I'm not sure people realize that I think at least the AD position and, and a lot of other of these positions do have applicants from outside of our system. That's not uncommon.
No, not at all, especially for that. But we, we do have out of county applicants quite frequently. And for at least two on here tonight, we had out of county applicants and one being recommended.
Ms. Herbert?
And I do believe I'm correct, but actually, there were two days of interviews for the athletic position.
Yes. We, we, we had
Popular job.
Many interested applicants.
Yes. Any other questions, board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Our last action item, we need a motion for the approval of personnel action items.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Dr. Dorsey, you okay? Dr. Lockhart?
Okay. This is the monthly personnel action item and included in the packet are details for three new hires, two releases from contract, one broken contract, and three leaves of absence.
Ms. Herbert?
I'm glad, I'm glad to see we hired a nurse. That was nice. Thank you.
Any other questions, board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now discussion items. The first discussion item is consideration of textbooks and instructional materials for 2022 to 2023. Dr. Lockhart?
Okay, board members. So this begins the several month process where we bring recommended materials for use, possible use in schools, beginning with the next school year. This list of materials that's included in your packet gets introduced to the Carroll County Public Schools Curriculum Council at this month's meeting. That's March 18th, I believe. And so we have opportunity for conversation there between our, our valued curriculum council members and the content supervisors. Council members are also encouraged to review these materials and provide feedback. And then on May 13th, the council reconvenes, votes, finalizes recommendations for board approval at the June 8th meeting. Materials are also made available to the public for their review and their feedback. And that goes on through, right, just about through the whole month of May. So like I said, this is sort of the beginning of that several month process with lots of feedback and review.
Yeah. So at next Friday's curriculum council, each area, subject area, will have a 20-minute time period where they will introduce the material, present the materials, and answer questions. Council members will rotate through the, the different sections so they get to hear each presentation. And then information will be made on the curriculum council website with mini videos. I know specifically in the areas of English, as well as overviews and summaries for people who just want a snippet of, of what the materials are. So, and hard copies of the materials are always available on the first floor curriculum office for anybody to come in and review at any time.
And, and I'm glad you mentioned that. And so if somebody's watching now or watches this later, who should they contact to be able to come in?
If they call the switchboard, 751-3000, and ask for Gail Cable, she'll arrange a time, either if they want to come in to review them here, or if there is some other kind of issue, we'll, we'll do whatever we can to, to arrange that opportunity for, for any individual.
And, and since we have you at the podium, that's also true about any curriculum.
That's correct. Anybody can come in at any time to review our, our curriculum. That's correct.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions?
Do you have a quick question?
Okay.
Ms. McCoslin, just wanted to check. I know in prior years, when we get, when this comes back for a final vote by the board, we usually get a, a summary of, this is the number of people that voted, and then if there were any negative comments or concerns about a particular resource. Do we have, do we ask people to, to check a box or something to say, yes, I did in fact review this information, at least to a summary extent or a full extent before, you know, asking them whether they, they vote in favor of or not in favor of?
We've not included that on, on any paper that I'm aware of in the past.
Okay. I was just curious, like, I would think that we'd want to make sure that people actually reviewed it, or, you know, at least make some sort of statement to say, yes, I did in fact review it before I voted on it, just to kind of keep the process honest.
I, I mean, we can certainly add that. Yes. I mean, typically, most people who don't review the, to, to be honest, most people who don't review the material don't participate in the voting.
Okay. That, that's what I was curious about, was, okay, if, if, if they, so it's not that every person that reviewed it cast a vote, or not every person on the council cast a vote?
That's correct. We generally have about 90 members on the council, and we typically run about 36 people, 36 to 40 people will, will turn in a vote.
And comments.
Okay.
And/or comments. They don't always add comments. Sometimes they'll just vote.
Okay. So I guess at, at the voting time, if we could just say, you know, please don't vote if you haven't actually reviewed it, just so we can get kind of an accurate count of how many people are actually reviewing the materials.
Yeah. I mean, we, we certainly talk through the process with the council members, both at the meeting next week, and, and will do so again when we go to vote in person in May.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Can I just add, there is a feedback form, so that when you review the material, there's a feedback form and there are ratings that you, the person who's reviewed the material, would have to fill out or, you know, add your comments concerning. So again, you do collect feedback from the people who review the materials. And I think, Mrs. Sevigny, are you asking that, again, when we look at the vote, the number of people who vote to, let's say, agree to have a material included, that we know that, yes, we're making sure that they've reviewed the material and they've had the opportunity to provide the feedback that they've wanted to provide, or?
I think, so, so if I understand the, the process correctly, like, so you have to fill out, it, it's not just a, a yes, no vote. I mean, I know that we've seen feedback in the past with people writing out specific commentary, but in many, many cases, there are not any actual comments. It's just a yes or a no.
Right. But it's a little more than that for the committee members who take the time to review the materials. I mean, you have to rate the material on the content and, you know, the accuracy and to the best of your knowledge. I mean, because again, by the time you get to some of the more technical, you know, textbooks and all, you're really relying on the supervisors and the content folks.
You mean the 600-page
Right.
graphic text? Yes.
But again, I'm just trying to make the point that, again, you just don't turn in the book and say, yes, I want us to go with this. But you really do have to take the time to reflect on what the material is offering.
Okay. That, that's helpful, Dr. Dorsey. Thank you. Because I, I know that, you know, we typically don't see a whole lot of comments. And, and all we see is a yes or no, like in favor or not in favor. So, but there's a whole lot additional background behind that, I guess, that gets summarized.
Right. But from what I remember last year, again, for people who did take the time to comment, those comments were included on the form, because I remember going through and seeing that some of the comments that I had made were actually on the form that you provided to the board, Mrs. McCoslin. So.
Any other questions? Thank you. Community Advisory Council and Ms. Pataglia, read the report.
I got that. The Community Advisory Council met on Thursday, February 17th. Mr. John O'Neill, Chief Operating Officer, presented an overview of the operating and capital budgets. In addition, at the board's request, members gave input on the qualities and characteristics parents would like to see in a new superintendent. A summary of the group's input has been provided to each board member. And the next board, the next meeting is going to be held April 26th. And I don't know if we had any topics.
Any questions?
I don't know if the board wants to open a discussion to any particular topics they want for, for CAC to discuss or have presentations on or anything like that.
Does anybody on the board have any topics they'd like to see them look at?
Is there anything from an ELO perspective, you know, the, the, the parents that have students who are participating in some of these ELO opportunities that we have, and, and if they think that they're successful, or if there's any suggestions that they have for improvement for, for their kids who are participating, or maybe suggestions? I don't know. I've, I've heard several parents from elementary school grades saying, you know, that the way that we differentiate in some of the younger grades, like with reading groups and, and it's kind of tough with having four reading groups in a, in a first and second grade classroom. You know, it means that there's a whole lot of time of the kids being, you know, sitting off to the side doing independent study while teachers, while teachers are working with smaller groups. Is that necessarily the, the most effective way to do things while, you know, we're in sort of a, a recovery phase? Basically, maybe just some brainstorming on thoughts and ideas?
I think that's a good one. Do we want to have like a presentation and then have the discussion?
Yeah, we're talking elementary language arts. So we'd correct Ms. Sevigny. So we'd, we'd probably want to maybe enlist Ms. Dale to support that conversation at CAC. Carrie?
Yes, we can certainly put together a presentation and have discussion.
Okay. Thank you. Any other thoughts on that? Superintendent's search update. All board members have signed confidentiality agreements for this process. We want to be as transparent as possible within those guidelines. We started by looking at possibilities for a consultant to conduct a search. On December 8th, the board approved professional services contract with the Maryland Association of Boards of Education to conduct that search. We met with MAB virtually on December 21st and met face to face with them again on January 26th. We advertised a stakeholder survey, collected the results, and reviewed it. We approved the application and all associated paperwork, opened the application process on February 1st with a deadline of March the 7th. MAB is screening the applications as they arrive. They will get us all applications received later this week. We will adopt interview questions, review applications, generate first interview questions, and confirm the process and procedures at our next meeting. The initial interviews will start at the end of March and continue through the end of April. We will include an update of this process at every regular monthly meeting. Board members, any questions, comments? Dr. Lockhart?
On a different topic, so whenever that's appropriate.
Any, any questions on superintendent search?
So I know last time there was a superintendent search. Students were sort of involved, specifically CCSJ was involved in sort of the latter portion of it when it came down to finalists and all.
of it, when it came down to the finalists and all, so I just wanted to know what sort of the board's plan was of getting students involved in the search again this year.
Now, Donna and Marcia were both part of that, we were not, but my understanding is, we'll do it like we did last time. Once it gets to finalists, there's maybe three different committees that, that will meet and talk and evaluate, and students are a part of that process.
Okay, just wanted to check in. Thank you.
Any more questions on that? Um...
I just want to say, thanks to Vanshi for, for asking that question. We know that when we, when we were hiring the superintendent the last time, the, the students had some of the best questions, so we certainly want to make sure that we afford that opportunity again this time.
Anything else on the search? Dr. Lockhart?
Very good. We got an answer for your question about the bids, so I thought I might as well share that now, so it saves us all on email. So we found out the bids were packaged, bidders could bid on just the washing machines, or the freezers, or they could package their bid for both, and a few of those did, including Arbutus, so their combined bid is actually the lowest overall, so they won the, they won the bids, so that answers that.
Which is not uncommon, that when you have a bid line by line, somebody's not bid on every, low on every line, but on the total. Thank you, Dr. Lockhart. Any other unfinished business or new business?
No, we need to announce, we're going back in.
5:00 PM Wednesday, April 13th, there's a board meeting with citizen participation in the boardroom at 125 North Court Street, Westminster. At 5:00 PM on Wednesday, April 27th, there's a scheduled board meeting with citizen participation in the boardroom at 125 North Court Street, Westminster. Now, Dr. Lockhart, the, the second meeting is if needed. That could end up being a closed and open, both, we'll, we'll determine and announce that on the 13th.
Correct.
Correct? And then, the board was in a closed meeting prior to this meeting, and as soon as we adjourn this meeting, we will return to close to finish that business. Any other comments, suggestions? Is Mrs. Her...
What time is it?
Oh, Commissioner Weaver owes me 50 more bu... Oh, you, he owes me 50 more bucks. Last time was 10, this was eight, I'm done, this is it. Mrs. Her, Mrs. Herbert, you want to make a motion?
So moved.
To adjourn. Second?
I'll second that.
And Dr. Dorsey seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone.